...to the flag of the United States of America and due republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Public Works, any wishes to address the council? Nope, okay. The closed session, we will dispense with that. There's no need for that since that would be reserved for doing a counter offer something after another person making an offer, and there is not in this case, so we're going to take that as part of our new business down under, wherever it is, down there someplace, and a new business. So, okay, consent agenda. We have 4.1 approval of minutes for the February 22nd Director of Council meeting, 4.2 approval of minutes for the February 29th Special Council meeting, 4.3 approval of minutes for the March 7th Special Council meeting, 4.4 approval of minutes for the January 12th Park Board meeting, 4.5 approval of minutes for the February 23rd Park Board meeting, 4.6 approval of claims for the month of March, includes pay request on loan for the Westland Restoration Project in the amount of $58,1242. 4.7 approval of the check summary for the month of February, 4.8 approval of building permit report for the month ending February 2016, 4.9 approval of Friday Department Report for the month ending February 2016, and 4.10 approval of the Sheriff's Department Report for the month ending February 2016. Do any of these items need to be pulled up for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion made, second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public Works, approval of slip lining. I assume Kyle wants to have the projector.
Uh, in a minute.
In a minute, okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor and council members, I've got a few things for you tonight. Hopefully I can get through them pretty quick. Start with the slip lining for 2016. A motion approving the scheduled slip lining on Blue Jay Avenue for the sanitary sewer. Staff is proposing to have 1,800 linear feet of sanitary sewer line along Blue Jay Avenue be rehabilitated by Institute Farm in the amount of $39,000. Institute Farm will be installing a specifically designed resin saturated polyester felt tubing into the existing sewer and curing it in place. Currently, the sewer line has that. Significant INI root and pipe deterioration issues, and it needs to be fixed ASAP. If the sewer line does not get rehabilitated, the city could be facing costly repairs in the near future. I've attached two bids, one from Vidu Sewer and one from Institute Farm. And Institute Farm did come out the cheapest. They really liked the project. They thought it'd be a nice, easy project, so it came in a little lower than what Vidu Sewer was.
Okay, any questions for Kyle?
It was quite a bit of a difference in price, but it's quoting the exact same. I didn't really...
It's actually in work, yep.
Have we ever done this before?
In a couple areas we have. Over by the lumberyard, we've done it in a couple areas, but otherwise, this is probably the biggest stretch in town that we've done.
How long does this last before you actually have to like...
Fifty-year lifespan, fifty-year lifespan on it.
Oh, really? Without having to replace the whole line?
Mm-hmm. As long as the pipe holds up and everything, yep.
So, this is kind of a benefit when we have the old clay pipe line. You can do it, and Kyle can probably talk about more about how it actually works.
Here's actually, I sold this to one of the vendors of the, I spoke, of the thing. That's actually, the blue part is actually the pipe, so that would be the clay part.
Okay.
The inside part is the liner.
Okay.
It's like a felt liner that they insert into the pipe, and then they...
You've got a hard...
Yeah, I don't know if we threw it away, or what we did.
So, this is what it's like before they do it?
And then they... They soak it in a fiberglass lining.
Okay, and that's what turns hard?
Yeah.
And then they put hot water in it or steam it.
Yeah, yep.
You can only do this to clay?
Well, you can do it to any kind of pipe.
That's BBC right there.
Well, right.
Yeah, any kind of pipe that's got leaking issues or infiltration issues.
Infiltration and roots and everything, it seals up the joint. Those few pictures that are on there. One's a rip ball. I actually had it routed out beforehand, so I didn't have any issues over the winter.
Okay, so they actually clean...
That's the track, and then that's a piece of the pipe that actually fell out. And then we get, there's a couple areas in that line that are actually gushers where there are actually five gallons per minute of like water just coming into our sewer line, which we don't want.
Which then we're paying to process.
Exactly, yep. And then when we do get the heavy rains, that's what potentially could back up our system. That could be one of the contributing factors to it.
And then this is something we budget, or that's what this inflow is, which turns up a pair?
Yep.
We've done this in other parts. Sorry, I know you probably said something, I'm just questioning. Okay, go ahead.
Um...
Go ahead, Bruce. This repairs the main line. How many service connections are there on that line that'll be tapped into it?
For the laterals?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how many we have. I didn't count them. I know that's the new and up-and-coming thing, is getting the lateral lines done. Right now, it's currently, I talked to Institute Farm about it. The price on it is quite high as of right now, but technology's getting a little bit better and everything. You know, it's a lot of work with the homeowner or two to kind of get the line, you know, done. So, it's, I can't remember exactly how much it was per line, but I know a few other cities are facing that same thing, so.
Do we feel that doing the main line is going to solve a lot of the INI, or is there a lot of INI coming?
Absolutely. In this section, yeah.
In the laterals?
Yep.
So, INI can, what does it get?
Inflow and infiltration.
Oh, that would be... I'm trying to make sure that I...
No, this is a good solution for the main line.
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't take care of the laterals, which the laterals really are the homeowner's responsibility, but the INI is...
We deal with the INI, exactly. Yep, a few...
Concern.
There's a few different processes where they've actually kind of, they tap in, kind of like how the curb box is. They actually add another piece, they stub it down into the sewer so they can actually get down into the sewer line without having to go through the house, where it looks like an additional cleanout that they have in the yard. And then they do it that way, but it's a lot of, a lot of work involved in it, and a lot of different technologies and stuff. And people are still trying to perfect it and get it right and make it cost-friendly too at the same time, so.
There's a really good article in the Star Tribune this night, it was last Sunday, about, um...
Yes, yeah, about water.
About water and INI issues in my cities.
I read it today.
We're actually very, we're actually pretty lucky. The new developments all have BBC, and everything's looking good with that so far, so, yep, so far. So, and then, you know, here are my jetting too. I'm going to have the rest of the old part of town jetted this year. Then next year, I should be able, I should look through, be able to look over the tapes and everything this winter and determine which other parts in town need to be slip lined as well, so. Hopefully, within the next few years here, we can really get a handle on it.
In our, in my neighborhood, that is brand new, like 10 years old, so...
I think most of Fourth Street is...
Fourth Street's all new, Fifth Street is still clay tile.
Except they replaced, they replaced our service when they did the street because those were badly replaced.
Yeah, I think on my house too, they replaced the service too, yep. Yeah, there's a few services that they replaced.
Didn't they replace those back to the property line? All of them?
I don't think all of them.
I think we made a determination at the City Council that because we were redoing the project, and the City Council decided that if there were services that needed to be replaced, we just replace them as part of the project. And that's what we did. Because, like you said, we end up in it's plan.
Well, didn't they put all the services back to the property line from the main line?
Well, that could be, but in the...
Because we had the street open, why you got the street open, you put that in new, and then you just reattach to the pipe coming out of the house.
Right, but if the pipe gets bad...
There were some that were always their house. Ours was always their house.
Yeah, I know someone did.
There were some, because I know ours, and I think a couple of our neighbors were always their house.
I think my wife nurse was one, and Kenny's. So, if they noticed it was bad, then they replaced it? We replaced it as part of the project. The city replaced it as part of the project. Because as long as everything was there, it was relatively for the city to do it, and it just ends up being part of the assessment on the whole project. Right, I agree with that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, so is there a motion, there's a big motion ordered then to go ahead with this, because it is a problem that needs to be fixed?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Yeah, motion made, second to proceed with the Institute Farm slip lining and the price of $39,702. Any further questions, discussion?
Could there be like hidden costs from that when they actually start doing it, or is that because you have the cameras, they pretty much...
They pretty much have it down to the science on what it's going to be. I think there is like a, something really drastic came up. There was a, I think, minimum cost or something. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it's, it's, they're pretty confident in it, so.
Okay, if that, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, approval of jetting for 2016.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and council members, a motion approving the scheduling of the yearly sewer jetting and televising. Staff is proposing to have about 22,000 linear feet of sanitary sewer line be jetted and televised by Overland and Sons in the amount of $17,400. The areas scheduled for maintenance this year include Old Town, Ash Avenue South, Ash Avenue North, Shimp Core Street, and Hidden Creek Phases 1 and 2. This is routine maintenance that the city is required to do on a yearly basis. After this year's televising, city staff should be able to determine what remaining, what remaining sections of clay sewer line need to be rehabilitated. I attach the two quotes, and I also attach the map, the areas that will be jetted. And then next year, I should be able to get the rest of the city jetted and televised, and within the three years I've been here, then I should have everything cleaned and get out my own rotation, so.
So, there was about $2,000 in the bids?
Yeah, it goes usually linear foot. It goes by. And Overland and Sons, they've done a, they actually did our jetting last year, and they also don't want to come and back our list stations and everything too.
When they do this jetting and televising, do you get a report on the condition of each manhole? Is that part of the...
It's not part of it, no.
It's not?
No. I do, I go out and do my own manhole inspections, so.
Just knowing that they're open, you know, if there's a INI problem?
Right, yep.
It'd be nice to catch it.
Sometimes they note things like that. If it's really a big issue, they'll put it in there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, and then you said this, so you're going to have televised, or everything's going to be televised?
Yes.
And you'll be able to spot?
Yep, yep, everything's going to be televised and cleaned, and I'll be able to figure out where our trouble issues are.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve this jetting at a price of $17,406.90?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I can second.
Yeah, motion made, second to approve the jetting and televising of the areas that Kyle has delineated. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, approval of purchased park vehicle.
All right. Last one, I promise. All right, Mr. Mayor and council members, a motion approving the purchase of a Kubota X1100C side-by-side RTV vehicle. Staff is proposing the purchase of this Kubota RTV from Arnold's of Glencoe in the amount of $17,700. This vehicle is going to be very, a very beneficial tool within the Public Works Department. It'll allow city staff to be more efficient, safe, and economical while performing everyday tasks. Currently, the Public Works Department operates with an F1, F551 ton and an F150 half-ton. The 1989 F150 has signs of wear and tear due to its old age, and it could be replaced with the purchase of an RTV. Staff has demoed a variety of models, and the Kubota was the most preferred. The vehicle will be fully equipped with turn signals, strobe lights, seat belts, making it safe to drive on the road, the price comparisons of each model. Some of the everyday jobs that the city will be able to do with the RTV include flushing hydrants, conducting manhole inspections, reading water meters, doing water meter MXU change outs, hanging flags on downtown streetlights, lowering gate valve risers, adjusting curb boxes, emptying garbage cans, dragging ball fields, spraying fence lines and curb lines, watering trees, downtown flowers, trimming bushes, exercising gate valves, weed whipping parks, and rightaways, trimming trees, doing go-for-one locates, shoveling snow away from downtown streetlights. There is also a variety of attachments that could be purchased on the vehicle, which would increase the number of tasks that could be performed. The vehicle will be used heavily during the summer months by seasonal staff doing everyday jobs within the parks. The RTV will also take some of the workload off the F550 because it will be more efficient, economical, and ergonomical when performing the different tasks. It will also reduce the need to drive the one-ton through the parks and on the trails. The RTV will be equipped with a cab making it, making for a safe, comfortable wide, and the ability to use it all year round. It could also serve as temporary backup vehicle while the F550 is being serviced. Overall, the Kubota RTV will allow Public Works staff to conduct everyday jobs at a higher level in a safe and more efficient way. These are some of the models I've demoed. The one in the middle, I did not get a price on just because the thing is very sporty-looking, and I did not want to look like the city just got out and went about a really expensive toy. So, anyway, I kept with the more work models, got the, I got the price on the Kubota, the Gator on top, and then the Bobcat, $3,400. The pricing, with the government discount that the city gets because we're buying new, the retail price of it, if any, any person were to go buy, it'd be $22,000. We get a $5,000 decrease, so our overall price is $17,700, fully loaded piece of equipment. The Bobcat and the John Deere also have some cost savings to go along with it. Here's me demoing it. Here's me flushing a hydrant. Currently, the city has 156 hydrants that get flushed twice a year, so getting in and out of the truck 156 times wears on you. That's probably the worst part. Trimming bushes along City Hall here, watering flowers you can pull around the watering cart, mulching trees, there's Kenji putting some mulch around some. Exercising valves, this is the new one that was installed by the Roundabout, turning it on. It's economical, this might be a little redundant, but I'll go over it quick. Not all Public Works tasks require a V8 F550 or a V8, or a V10 F550 or a V8 F150. The RFGV will be more fuel-efficient when doing just the basic tasks, reading water meters, drive around about 20 miles an hour. This will handle it just fine, watering flowers, weed whipping parks, emptying garbage cans, pulling weeds. It will serve as the main mode of transportation for seasonal staff. It'll have less impact on the parks, as far as you're not driving through there with a one-ton truck, you're just driving through there with basically a golf cart, so it won't impact, leave ruts or anything like that. Ergonomical, flushing hydrants, like I said, we have 156 of them that I could exercise twice a year. We have 300 manholes, which we do have a manhole lifter for the truck, so getting out of, in and out of the truck 300 times, so it's quite wearing on the person. It's easy to get in and out of. The box is low for easy loading, and it has a hydraulic dump box as well. Safety, the unit will be fully equipped with strobe lights, head brake lights, turn signals, hazard lights, mirrors, and a three-point seat belt. We also have a cab which will protect the operator from the elements, provide extra protection while on the road, and it also meets, it meets OSHA 1928 ROPS standards, which is rollover protective structures. So, if in the event of a rollover, it'll keep the operator safe. And it's also heated for year-round use. Replacement, if we decided, it could replace the 1989 Ford F150, which is currently used by seasonal staff in the parks.
That is all I have.
Any questions?
Is it a diesel or a gas?
It is a diesel.
Any other questions?
What other, because you mentioned that there could be other accessories you could buy in the future for it to extend its use. What were some of those?
Um, if we got, we could get a brush for the front of it, we could get a snow pole for the front of it, we could get a sprayer for in the back. Um, there's almost any attachment you could put on it, you could probably find something to put on it, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve this purchase? I think we've talked about it before, and Kyle's mentioned before that it'd be a big benefit, so is there a motion to approve that purchase? I mean, it's in the budget, right?
Correct, yep.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Yeah, motion made, second to approve the purchase of the Kubota RTV for the Public Works Department. Any further question or discussion?
What are we going to do with the old Ford pickup?
That was a discussion that Kyle and I did have, so go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we'll, we can use the, once we, if we do purchase the RTV, we can use it for a little bit, determine, you know, okay, we for sure don't need the F150 anymore, and then we can either bring it to an auction, we can sell it outright, it'd be a little extra cash, it's not worth a whole lot.
1989 or 2010.
It's a four-speed or five-speed, so.
Okay, any other questions? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. It should be DGA, let's see, there it goes. Okay, moving on. 6.1, presentation of 2015 audit. Mr. Mayor and council members, every year, after the auditor completes the audit of the books, they come and present the audit to you. They help control the city's financial affairs and make sure that we are keeping in, our financial tractions have occurred according to law. I'm not going to read the whole memo I gave you, but I gave you some ideas of some questions that you might want to also ask of the auditor, and I provided a management letter and a paper copy of the audit for each one of you.
Thank you, Lynn. My name's Kevin Knopf, I'm from the audit firm, I'm Blake Myers. Happy to be here tonight. I've been in Vanderbilt for about eight years, I'm an audit manager who's been working on the city of Mayors Audit now for five years. So, to begin with, you should have two documents at the front of you, it looks like. One is the management letter, and one is the actual audit financial statement. I'm going to be focusing in on the management letter as it gives a summary of the audit. Feel free to stop me as I go along with any questions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and everything that's in the paper as well. So, to begin with, the issues on audit by opinion for the city, the city that you're looking for when you get your audit, it's a clean opinion. I mean, we had it so difficult. Is there anything that would miss any financial statement reason? Our opinion is based on that the audit financial statement on the year we correct. I like to explain the physics that you don't come in and look at everything in action that the city has during 2015, so. Also, with our audit, we look at internal controls. We look at how the person's cycle of the manhole, as well as payroll and receipts, and make sure those are operating based on tests based on how we evaluate those internal controls. So, starting on page two of the management letter, you can see on the top, we have, we do have one finding as we call it preparation financial statement. This is a similar finding that the city has had for many years. Audit auditors draft a financial statement. The finding is required to be in the audit. There's no negative impact on the city. It's really the cost benefit of having someone else draft a financial statement. And then the bottom one, limited segregation duties with limited staff handling of the person's cycle, payroll cycle, receipts. You can only segregate the duty so much, so this finding is being recorded as well. It's been, been the city audit for many years. Again, no negative, no negative impact, we have to try and test how for the additional risk, and it's really the cost benefit. To get rid of the findings, we need to hire more city staff. Nothing more to say. On top of page three, there's seven areas of compliance that the mental, what they require us to look at through our tests and looking through those compliance requirements. We found no issues that need to be communicated. The rest of page three and page four, this one require worrying that needs to be in there. I'm not insignificant to point out there. So, going to page five in the management letter, we look at the general fund operation, the fund balance for the past five years compared to next year's budget. So, you can see at the end of 2015, the fund balance in the general fund is about 62% of the budget 2016 expenditures. So, very healthy fund balance. The city's got our policy that the fund balance is at a minimum of 50% if some needed capital, high in need of operations, until the state receives that first tax on the payment and it goes to line. There is a recommendation that we do have with the capital, with the capital projects and equipment funds. If there is, you know, excess fund balance above that 50%, the council could implement a policy that any excess fund balance could get transferred to the fund for the rest of future capital projects and equipment. Page six of the management letter, here we look at what the city budgeted compared to the actual results of the general fund. You can see in the far right column that the revenues came in about 106,000 over budget. This was mostly due to the city receiving more building permanent revenues than budgeted for really hard to see that have revenue, you don't know how much it's going to come in, so I'm not insignificant there. Now, you can see that expenditures also came in under budget by about $152,000. Most of this variance came in the play with capital holiday expenditures of the capital purchases of these projects or equipment were under budget by just under $99,000. This is mostly due to the budget capital purchases that did not happen in 2015. On page seven, we take a look at your revenue in the general fund for the past three years. You can see that most of your revenue source comes from taxes and governmental revenue, very common for states of your size. Most of that governmental revenue is local ownership. And then you can see the biggest jump from '14 to 2015 was in the license affirmative going from about $70,000 to $130,000 again, this is due to that, so. On page eight, we look at the expenditures in the general fund for the past three years. Very consistent in all, all functions of the, of the general fund. One thing that's to point out in the far right column, there's a peer group for capita. So, all we do is compile some information to cities of similar operation, also under 20, 500, and determine what other states of your size are spending, for example, on general fund expenditure. There's a good reference to this to see what, how other, you know, other states are spending majority of their money. But it's also just important to know that you city has your own specific and specific needs that need to be addressed. So, it's just a comparison to this, to look at how you're doing with the city. On page nine, we look at your special revenue probably on the top, nothing significant to note there. The second table is your capital projects fund. The decreases in most funds are the planned projects and first that the city has since 2015. The fire truck fund had a decrease just because it purchased a new fire truck. And then the capital project equipment fund decreased as there was a new truck purchase. On page ten, we look at the debt service fund of the city, currently there's two debt service funds the city has, and so is the total cash and the bond outstanding and the final insurance, the final charity available fund. The funds we have, the funds we have, the amount of cash and assets that we put in service, nothing further to say about them. On page eleven, we start looking at the enterprise fund of the cities. So on page eleven, we look at the water utility fund. Couple things to know here, that the blue bar is above the gray bar, so your operating receipts are covering your operating costs, is what you want. But you can see that the blue bar is not covering your operating costs plus the added service requirements. The city is relying on other, other revenue sources, like the next season's expenses are in the fund to help cover a debt service payment. So then on the bottom graph, you can kind of see where the graph, where there's some years that has been revenue to cover all, all operating and debt service payments, or some where it has, so you can see that cash has stayed relatively consistent in that fund, covering operating expense and also services. On page twelve, we look at sewer fund. Again, here you can see that the blue bar is above the gray bar, so operating receipts are covering the operating costs. The city does rely on tax, I mean, to help cover the debt service payments in this fund, which is, which represents most of that orange bar, possibly above the blue bar. So you can see a corresponding increase in cashes, two thousand twelve on the graph below, that's about one point three million, which represents money that are for future projects that will come up. On page thirteen, we look at the stormwater fund. Here's the blue bar, again, is covering the operating costs of this fund, and for most part covering the capital of that fund as well. The big orange bar in 2015 is due to transfers, transferring some capital projects and equipment fund to help fund the future projects. On page fourteen, we compiled some ratios for the city. Again, the red, the red numbers are the peer group average, we compile the average of cities for under, under twenty-five hundred. Just a couple ones that I'd like to point out, if you look at the debt per capita, the third one down, you can see that the debt per capita is a little bit higher than the peer group, but again, remember, it's a comparison tool, the city mayor has a specific needs or is having to do that for projects, or maybe other states are lacking or no projects and will be issuing debt in the future where the city mayor will not, so. Nothing to be learned of, just something, just again, just a comparison tool. And then you can see on the line below, the tax for capital is a little bit higher compared to other cities, again, using taxes to help pay for your normal operations in the general fund, will also help cover the debt that the city has paid off. So those two numbers of the debt per cap and taxes per cap are really equivalent. There are big significant increases, if you look down at the capital expenditures for capital, pretty significant increase from 2014. This was just mainly due to a roundabout project and the cost associated with that, so this number tends to fluctuate into the panel with type of capital projects that the city had going on. Just one last thing to note on midway down 2015, through the end of the management letter, these are some future ELC standards that will be required to be implemented through the city. Just want to point them out for you here, these terms being throughout there, give you a plan of reference to know what they are. Our firm continues to research these ELC standards and we do implement it, and how we went on putting up those standards, that has been. That wraps up, I was trying to go over, if there's any questions on what I discussed, or if there's just a question we have in general or about the audit financial statements that we got to answer.
Any questions? Got that time reading? Those are interesting numbers, if you start going back to them, so. We do them at times, so. Any questions? Do we need a motion to accept this then? Okay, then we need a motion in order to accept the auditor's report.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? A motion made second to accept the auditor's report for 2015. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your remarks, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on, six dot two, request of Elite Waste Disposal.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city of Mayor has a fee increase request from Elite Waste Disposal. Elite Waste Disposal is stating an unforeseen increase in the disposal and processing rates. They're stating that the MPCA is enforcing Minnesota Statute 473-848. This statute requires that all municipal solid waste in the metro area must be processed and not landfilled if processing capacity is available. Elite is requesting an increase on the waste disposal portion of the garbage bill, which is twenty-two percent of the total fee. So on a ninety-six gallon, the portion of the ten thirteen that is assigned to the waste disposal fee is two dollars and twenty-three cents, and the request is for twenty percent of the two dollars and twenty-three cents, or forty-five cents. And then below is the proposed monthly fee increase. Staff did contact MPCA to gain more knowledge on Minnesota State Statute 473-848. MPCA staff told city staff that the state statute had been in place since nineteen eighty-four and was modified in nineteen ninety-six. MPCA has clearly stated in public documents and public notices of the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Plan of 2010, MPCA's intent to enforce the law in a high priority with public entities, so this isn't a new law. The other issue that you'll have to deal with, with Elite Waste Disposal is that it's come to staff's attention that several of the residents of Mayor have had extra bag fees on their bills. They're stating that the additional bag fee of four seventy-five per bag have been added to their garbage bill. Many of them have two additional bag fees and did not have any additional bags. I have addressed some of these with Elite, and they have went back and credited them, but I think city council may want to have some discussion about those fees. So I gave you the contract that you have with Elite and also the RFP. And Troy is here tonight, so.
Is there anybody else, any other communities that are getting increases because of this?
Yeah, we just. Yeah, the city of Jordan, we just went to them and they granted. We're a subscription-based customers, it was pass-through cost, so the ones that are one-on-one, making a contract right with us, obviously, the city's going to be one-on-one and having a conversation.
Is there a reason this wasn't figured out on the contract originally?
Yeah, I was not overplayed until December sixteenth, from our holler, where we take it. And I asked him if he could give me ninety days notice, or some type of notice, and he said if I gave you that, I'd have to be cautious. We were overplayed on December sixteenth, and on January first, we got it. We've been absorbing it since then. It was Waste Management, obviously the largest holler in the world, and they bought it for two years, tried to, tried to not allow MPCA to enforce it at all. So we're in a position of small holler, that we have a price increase that we didn't have any control of, of government, so. I'm just asking, if it has to, it's not a, there's no, there's no money to be made in this, and how you're being very open, if you make a point to our expenses are, I certainly can change that if you'd like, but I'm not just grabbing any numbers, I'm really just trying to cover our raw costs.
Did Waste Management pass this on to the end users as well, you know?
I don't, I don't know. I would, I would gather saying that. But I don't have any facts, but I would guess what they, I would guess what they are.
Fair assumption.
Well, the, the good thing about this in the long term is that now every holler is paying the same amount. So Waste Management now pays the same amount for Waste Disposal, we pay Waste Disposal. So it is leveling the playing field, the unfortunate part is, we're a small company, we have to go through the big jump all in one year, you know? It would have been nice, and obviously I didn't have control of this, but it would have been nice if they could have like a five-year plan, we're gradually getting up to this number, but that wasn't the case, so.
Guess we went through a lot of work to negotiate a new contract, and then to see this, along with the letter that we got from our residents regarding the extra charges for bags, I guess it bothered me a little bit. I was hoping that we did the right thing, and, you know, to do an increase kind of hurts right now, especially halfway through the year.
Could I address the bag?
Sure.
I think it'd be important if I addressed that, we'll continue the other conversation, so. Those bag charges, I'm guessing, the majority of them should not have been pass-through. I had a previous operations manager, he instructed our drivers that it was open as much, to charge extra. That is not the way we operate, it's not an excuse, but it's a reason. I did not know about it. Once I did find out about it, I put a clause to it, that we are not, that's not the way we operate, okay? The idea of the extra bag, if we have one, is if our driver has to get out of the vehicle, my proposal is, we didn't really address it in the RFP, because I didn't think it would necessarily be an issue. Honestly, I spoke with Ms. Murphy, I don't, I don't necessarily think it is an issue that we need to address. I credit every late fee, or every, I'm sorry, every extra bag fee that Ms. Murphy has brought in front of me, say, television, if somebody was charged an extra bag fee, who didn't have extra bags, we're not in the business to try and charge for it, sorry.
We're not in the business to try and gouge people, that wasn't, that's not the way we operate. The operations manager's no longer with me. Drivers are very clear on what we expect.
So there is an extra fee if the driver gets out, but what if your lid is up?
There is not an extra fee.
And Elite has been, every time I've sent him information, they've taken care of it immediately, so they've been very cooperative with accrediting the residents back.
Let's try to make sure that we figure out ways to communicate to the residents to review their bills, to make sure that the ones that maybe have not noticed it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, I mean, we hear it more and more every day, not from your company, but other companies, is how they do that, you know? And if people don't question their bill, they're making off on it, and I just, I just hope that this ain't happened.
Well, it, it did happen, and it happened on my watch, but I didn't know about it, and I'm, and I'm making it right. I'm making it right with the residents, and like I said, if, there's a way that, put it out on the website or whatever, if you were charged and you didn't have extra bags, that's, that's not what we're trying to do, okay? It's absolutely ridiculous that we would charge if the lid's open, so.
But can't you go back in your system and look and see who was charged extra bag fees and discredit them?
I will be honest, I don't know. I don't know if there's a report. What's popping into my head initially right now is that I know how we go into each account, and I would have to go into each individual account and look at the notes, so I don't know if there's a report that I can find out.
It's put some on Facebook for people to check, just to double-check that nothing happened.
And maybe putting a note on the line.
Yeah, and I, I can understand if there's something, if somebody's got something besides a container where the driver has to get out, that's fine, I can understand the extra charge there, no problem with that.
And then I think we need to make a note of that as well, that there is an extra fee if the driver has to get out of the thing, just so residents are aware, I mean, that makes complete sense. Because like, what happens if I just, you know, like, I thought, I'm like, well, some weeks I only have one bag in there, do I get a credit?
Right.
Because I was full, you know?
Well, and honestly, our, our suggestion is, we're trying to keep our drivers safe, not that we're trying to charge the extra bag. We tell our customers all the time, if you have a neighbor that can take the bag, or, you know, if you can spread it out over a couple weeks, you know, I mean, there's, there's options for it, but, yeah, I mean, we're trying to prevent them having to get out at every stop, so.
We have noticed, and I, and I saw a couple notes, I'm just gonna bring it up now, that there has been garbage left on the street after pickup. Like, when I got home, my recycling, I, I saw like one of our boxes on the ground. So I did notice, I saw, I was added to a Facebook group, neighborhood group, just because I wanted to, to see what people were talking about, and, so that we could address things before they become an issue. And that, some people have said that it seems a little messier, like, when the, when it lifts up, they leave, and then some garbage has fallen onto the ground.
I think once all that happens, in defense.
I know that does happen once in a while.
It happened with, with Waste Management too, is if you got a particularly windy day.
Right. I saw a note on it, I just was gonna throw it out there, and if we notice a lot, is that something that we just would call?
Absolutely.
For some reason, my garbage still seems like there was a lot left in front of my house.
Absolutely. Call in to customer service, you can call me, I mean, however, whatever's the easiest, but we should be taking care of that.
Right.
But yeah, it is a, it is a challenge on windy days, I will, I will admit, they do the best they can, but I will bring it up to them on our launch tomorrow, just to let them know that.
I just, I saw a couple notes on it as well, and I don't know, people were just complaining about this extra bag, I just wanted to add to the complaints, like, why did we change anyway? Why does the city hold the contract, kind of thing, so.
And I don't want, I don't want the council or the people in the city to feel that they made the wrong decision. You made the right decision. It's unfortunate that this bag fee happened at the same time as the mandatory processing came through. It's not an ideal situation, for sure, I get it, but I can tell you, it was not intentional. Still happened on my watch, so I take full responsibility for it, but we are making it right, and, like I said, if anyone has extra bag fees that were put on there and you didn't have extra bags, we're just refunding it, so.
Okay. Okay, getting back to the rate increase, I'd like, Bruce said I'd probably don't see the extra rate increase right now, but in, looking at it, the sixty-four gallon size, it's forty cents a month, which is four eighty for a year, which is less than the cost of a glass of beer, so I don't think it's a huge increase. Or if you want to go coffee, it's, it's about the roughly as cost of a fancy cappuccino latte someplace, so.
And this may, have just made us more even to what we were paying with Waste Management. I can't remember what the difference was.
Yeah, so.
It was this much.
It was about, I mean, it was. It was about seven, it was seventy-seven cents.
Yeah. So it's, it's not a huge, I mean, it's not, it's, I said, I don't see the increase in the middle of the year, but on the other hand, it's not, it's not an increase that's hugely aligned, so.
Ones are clean up, they have it at the end of April.
Well, that's what I was, I was down here to ask, because I think it was the end of April, and they're gonna do it again.
I don't have it in front of me, but.
I think it was April third of it.
Remember?
Yeah, whatever, I know Tracy was working with you on arranging it, so, yep, whatever she came up with with you, that's what we decided, I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I hope that goes smoothly.
Yeah, I would hope for that, because, yeah, I hope that happens smoothly, because if not, then.
That's curbside, curbside pickup, right?
Yep, we know. We do it in, we do it in Carver, and it's a, it's a process, we, but we come well-equipped with lots of people, so.
We heard last year from Waste Management that was like a record year last year of collection out here, so maybe everybody cleaned out their wastements.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, so I'm, I'm doing it this year, so.
It's a, it's, it's a nice convenience, but, yeah, it's, that's why we had to price it the way we did, because it's an unknown, you know, when you're doing the curbside. There were some comments made about trash cans being knocked over, like, a lot, and...
I was gonna address that, just drive around when you pick it up, that's kind of the trash you need to damage. That's kind of the trash you need to damage, to kind of pick it up really quick. When they dump it in, and then they slam it down, and it kind of just falls over and you set it back down. So that's just what I've noticed when I go through town.
So it's not just on a windy day that they're gone? You've witnessed it, okay.
Yeah.
I'll talk to them about that as well. So the idea is, and what we, what we train our drivers to do is to put the cart back in the exact same spot with the lid closed. What they should be doing. As my wife and I continue to grow the company, it becomes more challenging sometimes to get people to do exactly what you'd like, but.
Well, I mean, we were, I mean, I was excited to, you seemed very motivated to do this, so I'm really hoping that you guys can kind of move it in the right direction without having too much more negative, so that people don't feel that we made the wrong decision.
Yep. No, I could not agree with you more. My heart, my stomach sank when they told me that that's what the operations manager said. So immediately took care of it with Ms. Murphy and remedied it as quickly as I could, I guess.
All right, we'll post it so people know about it, so make it an influx of calls.
So as I'm sitting here thinking too, is, we've usually done a newsletter when we've done cleanup day. And I know that the Kugler site, I believe, recycles mattresses now. And so maybe we need to put together some kind of a newsletter, some, like, a couple of weeks before the cleanup, and then put in there where they can recycle some of the stuff, just to try to keep some of the garbage out of the landfills or out of the processing. And maybe you can, I can send it to you or Tracy or someone, and you guys can review it. And maybe there's other areas that we don't know about where-
Absolutely.
Some things could be recycled, so that'll be a goal then, to do a newsletter second week of April.
Can we use those certificates?
Well, you didn't do a program again, but you certainly can if you want to, because you've got the money.
Can we, can we finish this one first, and we can address that? Okay, so is there a motion to approve this rate increase? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I don't want to, but I'll second it.
Okay, motion made second to approve the rate increase as requested. Any further discussion or questions?
I think they sound like they have a handle on it, and there are other problems they're trying to fix it. And I think that's ultimately what's important.
That's, sounds good.
Well, unfortunately, MPCA is mandating we try to recycle more. And that's why so much of this has got to go through the processing places. And it's not cheap to recycle. You pay for it, so.
Does it mean that people don't recycle, but they're making money?
Because of landfill space.
Yeah, land, mostly, mostly landfill space, and it's all of it's processed and converted into energy. So it's a good cause. They just weren't getting, they weren't filling up the three burners that are in the Twin Cities area. And so this is a way for them to make sure they get full, so. They'll be full now.
So you're bringing stuff to there instead of a landfill? Is that what you're doing?
We take it to transfer station down at Demcon, Demcon, the transfer station in front of Demcon landfill in Shakopee. And then they transfer it out to the Ramsey-Washington in Newport, Minnesota. So they transfer it out there, and that's where the waste is processed.
And they process it, do they make it into refuse, do they do, make it into fuel, or do they just?
It's, yeah. Refuge drive fuel, and then convert it into energy, yeah.
And then that goes to like the electric plant in Mankato, they run it to make electricity. And there's one in, I think-
I'm not sure where the other one is. Mankato is where our ash ends up. So unfortunately, unfortunately, the material gets transferred out to Newport and then right by Shakopee again. But it's still, I mean, it's still a good cause.
Isn't there, I think, some place, no?
That's possible. We don't do anything with them up there, but.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, now, should we just address the cleanup or the-
We'll work on a newsletter, and then we'll get the newsletter in front of you guys, and we'll see it.
Like, are we doing electronics recycling again too, is that?
No, we haven't. We're planning on it, no.
So what's going to happen there?
I don't know, what do you want to do? We can do the ten dollar coupons and let people haul them over to Kugler. I mean, we're not, we're not going to get into electronics again, because we ended up with how many truffles? And loading them and unloading them, and, no, we're not doing that.
There'll be semi, there'll be semis full, if you do electronics.
We had, we had, how many thousand, sixteen thousand pounds last year, I think? It was terrible, that we load, unloaded from people's cars into here, and then hauled it over. So we're not doing that.
Is there funds available to redo that?
Well, you, yeah, you guys have thirty-seven hundred dollars that you get from the county for recycling, from the solid waste grant that they give you. And every year, you've always taken a thousand dollars of that and set it aside for the ten dollar coupon. So if you want to do that again, you can make the motion that you could do that recycling coupon program again.
We can get that going before-
Yeah, you can make it tonight if you want, and we'll advertise it.
Well, we probably should, because this is where we're in March.
I'd make that motion.
Yeah, I would, I like-
I'll second that.
Would, I don't know, Troy can help you, but I would work with the two recycling facilities that we have in Carver County, and make a list of what they will accept at each one.
Yep, okay.
And let the residents know that they're open for their use, you know, that's where they need to take it.
And it's inexpensive, so that's where, that's where you want it to go.
Okay, so we have a second and a, a motion and a second to do the, was it the, or the electronics?
It's recycling coupons, for ten dollars per resident, per year.
So you could use that for mattresses as well, anything, if they want to just-
You could use it for anything, yeah, over to Kugler, yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your understanding.
Six dot three, approval of purchase, approval for purchase of Udel swing.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the Park Board and City Council had applied for a grant to the Christopher Reeves Foundation for the purchase of an Udel swing. And in December, the city received notice that the city had been awarded a grant in the amount of five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. The city has now received the check, and staffs requesting authorization to purchase the swing and have it installed. So I've provided you with a picture of what it is. It's going to go in Westridge Park, and it'll be within the wood shavings that's there on, well, there's a mapping here, I think I gave you two, that shows where. It'll be installed, out in the corner.
Oh, here.
Yes. So it's within the wood shavings that we have already.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, there's a big opening spot.
Does that cover the install in there, really?
Well, the install, it keeps changing. I showed Kyle that. I said, first it was four hundred, then it was three hundred, now it's two fifty. So I don't know, I, site work and mobilization, there's an extra two hundred and fifty dollars that I'm not sure about. But if we can do, you know, if we can do that site work, we'll do it. I asked him, I emailed him, and he never responded to me what it was for, on, if you look on this list. But we have, for the installation and the concrete and the Udel swing, we have that all covered in the grant. It's just the two hundred and fifty dollars that we don't have covered, in the grant.
Well, that's mobilization fee. I'd ask for clarification on that.
Okay.
Ask him how come that keeps changing, and tell him you'd like to place an order.
If he removes the mobilization fee, I can do that.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the purchase of the Udel swing. Any further discussion or questions?
No, this was because it's more handicapped, or for children with disabilities.
Right. So Ben shared, was the Park Board's mission, and maybe I should just ask this when we go to the joint meeting, was they were going to try to make that park more, because right now, it's not really accessible for people like in a wheelchair. But that's the goal, and this is just the start of it. Okay, but that's exciting.
Okay, call motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, six dot four, approval of adopt the park application.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Park Board has received an adopt a park application for Old Schoolhouse Park. The application is from the Watertown Mayor Boy Scout Troop 209. Park Board is recommending approval of the adopt a park application for this Boy Scout troop. So motion approving it would be in order.
I just put a define under what they do and so forth and process, so any questions?
This is actually the third park that we have adopted. Meadow Park's been adopted by two different families. Old Schoolhouse Park has been adopted by one family, and now Westridge will be also, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Oh, my goodness.
Is there a second?
There's a second one.
Okay, motion made second to approve the adopt a park application. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
How long do these last? Was it just until whatever, or?
A couple of years, I think. I think they last for as long as they keep doing it.
Oh, commitment, a minimum commitment of two years.
Right.
Okay, six dot five, acceptance of resignation, authorization to advertise for a planning commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staffs received the attached resignation from Krista Goodell. Krista serves on the Mayor Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff is requesting acceptance for the resignation and authorization to advertise for a planning commissioner.
Do you motion accept and to authorize advertising position?
I'll second that. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approval of Park Board recommendation on vacant position.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Park Board met on Tuesday, March eighth, and at that time, they interviewed two persons for the vacant position on the Park Board. After introductions and meetings of candidates, Park Board is recommending that Alyssa Johnson be appointed to the Park Board to fill the vacant position, and this is Krista Goodell's position also. I think it only goes through January of next year.
Is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the recommendations from the Park Board to appoint Alyssa Johnson to the Park Board. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, approval of job description for full-time deputy utility billing clerk. Is this job description pretty much the same as what it was for the part-time?
Right, right.
The advertisement is first of all?
No, they, here's the job description first of all.
Oh, you just have them the wrong-
On the agenda, do I have them backwards?
They're backwards.
Okay.
So six point seven is the job description.
Okay. So this is the job description I went through, and I changed it so that it was full-time hours. I put the pay equity points, I believe, on it also.
Yep, one hundred and seventeen.
Yep. And that is what, this is the position that Hamburg had, and those are the points that they used off the state job match also for the pay equity points.
And you notified the others?
I have sent letters to all the other candidates, telling them that we've decided that we want to make it a full-time position, and that they can watch for the advertisement after tonight's meeting.
Okay, any questions about the job description first of all? So other than change it to the forty-hour thing, that's about all, no major changes were made to it at all. Okay, so a motion to approve the job description as presented for the full-time deputy clerk position. Is there a second? A motion made second to approve the job description as presented. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, now we got the approval of the, to, of the advertisement.
Right. The position would be for forty hours per week. Council did budget fifteen dollars per hour for the position. I've attached the advertisement. I'm proposing that we advertise from March fifteenth to the thirty-first with the first round of interviews we held the week of April eighteenth. And then the anticipated start date for the position is Monday, May second. I put that all in the, unless you want to change the dates on the, unless you want to leave it open longer and adjust the dates, we can certainly do that also, but.
Is the eighteenth, is that a-
Eighteenth is a, it's a Monday, it's a council meeting week.
It is. So how does that work? You just have to use for four days?
Well, we can either do it that week. It wouldn't necessarily, maybe do it on the night of the council meeting. Maybe we do it on Tuesday.
Yeah, we may have to pick a different night, probably, to a different night for that, I'm quite sure.
Unless you want to make this April twenty-fifth, and just do it on the, you can do the interviews on the twenty-fifth, which is a Monday, and move that out, move the date out, the start date out. I mean, these are just goals.
Pardon? There's nothing on the fireman's schedule that I can do it.
Is there a reason we wouldn't keep it open until April eighth?
No, we can.
I mean, I didn't know the deadlines, if there was something you were trying to target.
Nope, I just put it-
I was thinking that two weeks is enough time, or-
I just wonder if an extra week went.
I think we could push it all extra week.
To the eighth of April, is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, and maybe push the interview back to the twenty-fifth, like you said.
Okay, that would still give us time to review.
Yeah. Let's try that. At least, we can always push the interview back to if we need to, but let's do that.
Yeah, and we could do interviews maybe on not a Tuesday, as scheduled. Or not a Monday.
I can Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay, so we've got the change to advertise until April eighth, and then we'd have interviews on or about the April twenty-fifth.
So the start date's not going to be May second, but-
That'd be about a week or so later too.
They were just targeted.
Yeah.
And then are we going to do it at fifteen dollars an hour? Is that what you want to do? Or do you want to do a range? And we did arrange the last time, ten to fifteen.
Well, what's the max? Is that, is fifteen the max you can go?
Fifteen is what you budgeted for.
What about pay equity?
Well, it isn't going to matter as much, probably on this one.
I kind of like a range, and then it just doesn't-
About a thirteen to fifteen dollar range.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it's-
But do we go-
The fifteen dollars is high enough. I don't know. Did you look, did you look online to see what any of them were posted on?
You budgeted fifteen, that's why I put that in here, but you do have extra money from the building permit fees, as your auditor told you too. And you could put negotiable in there too.
I'm just thinking, you know, it's starting later in the year, how much that would affect the bottom line.
Well, you only budgeted for a part-time person, and now it's going full-time, and you're starting later in the year. So that's where some of the money's gone.
So there would be some extra money there to bump it up.
But there would be some building permit fees, yeah.
Well, what do you think?
I like the range.
Can I do thirteen to eighteen? Because if you, if you, if it's only half a year, it's three thousand dollars. It's a thousand, it's two thousand and eighty is where a full-time person works.
Yep.
So it'd be a thousand forty times three bucks at the end of, at the eighteen, three dollars more than what you, and that doesn't mean you're going to put them there, but then it'd be three times a thousand forty, so it'd be three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And then there'd be extra on the para, and extra on the psych, another fifteen percent.
But if you have a little higher range, it may attract somebody that's a little more qualified.
Or you don't start them until June first, too.
When did Kyle start them?
I don't remember what Kyle started them, yeah.
Right.
I don't know, I mean, I'd like to, you know, have some kind of comparable to attach to it, so I'm just going to take your number out of the air. If we budgeted fifteen as a max, I'm okay with that, but I'm okay with, you know, looking at to see what's comparable to everywhere else, but.
Would, do you want to put, put a range in here, and then I can get your numbers, or do you want to wait to advertise?
Well, I kind of feel like we need to do this.
I think we need to advertise.
I don't think we should wait to advertise. I think we should do a range. I don't want to discredit, but I don't want to be misleading if someone's like, oh, I'm going to get eighteen dollars an hour. I think that's based more on experience than-
I like the idea of advertising and moving forward with it. And again, we were looking at part-time, but now Lois has kind of changed the length of time she wants, the days she wants to work, so the dollar amount doesn't bother me as much, you know, bumping it up to eighteen. You know, there again, we're going to select somewhere in between that.
Maybe thirteen to eighteen.
Thirteen to eighteen?
Yeah, thirteen to eighteen, and-
And again, it's, we can make determination after interviews, what we can offer. And kind of just based on experiences of tool.
And it wouldn't be bad to get a comparison either, just so we are, kind of have an idea too, and comfortable with what that wage is.
We can work on that as we move forward. We can work on that as we move forward.
Okay, so looking at a range of 13 to 18, extending the date to April 8th, and motion everything back about a week or so. And it's up too. So is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion made second then to advertise with those changes? Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, can we rather than go on with the Neil Guff thing, can we take up the Casey's thing? So, you need to leave the scissors down. So, okay, we've got the, the Casey's has made a, an offer of $220,000, right? Luann?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Now, so we, a couple of options. We can accept Casey's as it is. We can accept Casey's and just, accept Casey's offer. And what was their anticipated closing up out? Luann, you said six months or less?
Six months, is what they're saying. But it, part of, the reason that they say six months is because they'll come in now with a site plan review and everything, and they want to make sure everything works for them before they'll actually close on the lot. So if we can expedite the site plan review at the planning commission level and some of those, we may be able to shorten the time.
So we could, could shorten the timeframe down to maybe four months by expediting things and moving ahead a little faster. So we could accept the offer as it is. It doesn't quite cover, it doesn't cover our costs, but if we accept the offer as it is, I think you saw Luann's memo about it, on a per-square-foot basis, we're actually getting a much better value on the other property. We could try and go back with a counter offer to Casey's. I'm not sure they would appreciate being nickel and dime to death. I don't think they would. I think they might just decide, well, I'm gonna walk away from it then, and we're stuck with it. And the other option, I guess, and I'm not sure where Gary Harms is at. I was talking to Francis before, and I think Gary wants to work with us. There's such a thing as revisiting that non-refundable earnest money. Maybe we can negotiate that down a little bit too, or something like that too, I'm not quite sure. A lot of things have gone through my thinking on this process.
So I did contact Lexstar about the 6% realtor fee, and I asked them if they would reduce it. This was last Thursday. And they said, well, what would you like it reduced to? I said 3%. And he said, I don't think we'd go 3, but we might go 4, 4.5. Let me fly it up the flight hole, and I'll get back to you. And he was supposed to do that on Friday, he didn't. And I don't see anything today in the emails either. So that would save us about, you know, another, what would it be? About $4,000, I think it was, if I figured it. It'd be 8,800 instead of the, at 4%, instead of the 13. So we'd come ahead a little bit on that realtor fee too. So if we can work the angles that way, maybe we can not have quite as big of a loss.
So I guess the question is, if we just, our, okay with going, excepting Casey's offer, what are we gonna do with the Harms property? Do we see if Gary will work with us and just extend the purchase agreement till we close on it, knowing that it's potentially four months out? Hopefully get done in four months? Or what? What are we gonna do?
I think that's the road we're headed down. This was the intent, was to sell that lot. I think we're gonna have to maybe negotiate a little bit. We're gonna take a little less for the lot if we negotiate with the realtor, sell that lot, and hopefully Gary will understand and work with the city and move forward on purchasing his.
That's the road I think we should go down as well. And I think it's worth it to, you know, hopefully bring some more jobs down, for some, hopefully for some growth.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with accepting your offer, so I think the offer is fine. I think I'm, I don't think, I don't get into the counter offer business right now. At least in such a small amount percentage-wise.
Do you need a motion to that?
Yeah, there would be a motion.
I'll make the motion to move ahead with the offer from Casey's and try to work with the realtor to see if they'll.
Reduce their fee of that?
Reduce their fee to 4%. And continue to talk to Gary regarding moving forward with the purchase of his.
And you can tell Gary we very much are very, very interested in his lot. Extremely interested.
When would you maybe build a fire station? Or is that even a fair question to ask? And the only reason I ask is, he would, he would like, I think it would make a difference to him. I think he got a bid on doing something in Crete, and he would like to use the lot to store some material for that job.
We gotta deal.
Then we gotta deal.
Yeah. It's pretty good. But would you guys have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
No, if that's, if that's gonna make him, you know.
Happy. I don't know, but, you know, he did bring that up, that he would like to store some material there.
No, we don't have a.
I didn't want to put you in a hot spot.
No, no, there's no imminent building going to take any place, so. So we could certainly work with Gary on that, that'd be no problem.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go ahead with accept Casey's offer and hopefully proceed as fast as possible, suppose. Any further discussion or discussion?
That's a 2:20.
That's a 2:20, yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank Francis. Okay. Okay, then we've got the Neil Guff presentation. So if I go, okay, Luann, did you talk to, are we, what are we supposed to put in here?
My name.
Your name?
Yep. Want me to do, want me to just do what I need to do? I can't.
If I could type, I'm in really good shape, which I can't type tonight. I just put.
Are you?
Are you, are you. Email address?
D D M. And the city's number, 952-57223.
You can type on three different keyboards in a day. This should be a bit of a problem. Okay.
And then city administrator. I'm giving the mayor.
If I heard it correct before, I say okay. I don't have that correct. Okay, city, have Minnesota countrynet, Minnesota 1502, say okay, register. Oh, you know what? There may not be volume because this is VGA. Kyle. Your iPad. His iPad will play with the HDMI.
You'll probably have to go back to that.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, just.
Yeah, you need that cable there.
You need the web site that you have.
I'll put it up on the screen, and you can. There it is.
It's like a line watch, yeah? Use much for water flow or, you know, pressure by making the pipes smaller? I mean, it's not much smaller, but.
Yeah, you could use some, a little bit of space.
That's what's right.
I thought my assessment, just to replace it, that was, that's like half of what I paid. Was that a 10-year law? I can't remember. Cause I didn't pay cash for my.
Was it assessed?
Yeah.
I think it's 10-year.
10-year?
I think it was 10-year.
Okay, so it was when Kate was born. Did it start that year that it, it started the year that she did it?
I've got it, and I hit button, I.
Probably the next year, probably.
Yeah. So like two years for a month. Because it, my taxes doesn't say what my balance is, it just shows what the assessment is for that year. I will do that. Right, right, right. I'd be curious, like, how many year they're, like. No one's allowed it out. Well, yours is, that's probably when you bought the house, it was part of your job. That's the one thing, it's like. He's going away. I just talked to mine, and it goes, go to meetings.
You can talk to this one.
So what is this? This is going over the Neil Guff process.
Performance review, and how it works. I mean, if you each want to just to take my information, can each go on and figure it out?
We could do that, right.
Yeah, maybe that's better.
Do I gotta finish?
I mean, you probably enter our own information.
No, I think you guys can start. I've got it over it now.
Well, let's just do that.
Yeah, let's do that. I would rather get home.
I didn't want to see it though.
I'll, over 10, I could.
Don too, probably.
I really enjoyed the camping. I was really tempted to talk about my camping experience with my kids. Cause you had, like, interest, the people interested.
Right. Who are, are serious?
I think because I contacted you about doing my.
Okay, let's just do that on our own.
And then we'll circle back at another, we're finishing meeting, or.
Yeah, that works. Okay, I think that's it. There's some other information stuff. Any council reports? Oh, sale the fire truck, that's just.
The check.
The check is in there. Yeah. You got $8,000 for it.
Well, you were able to negotiate that. So you're gonna have to, you have to, um, the. Well, then we don't have to sit on it anymore.
They're thinking, he was thinking of coming up and driving it back home. Rod's trying to convince him, talk him out of that, so. It'll be a long drive. Okay, so that's done, and. Other than education activities, did you have any on this? Make it by chance, or?
No, I, we meet on Thursday, so.
Okay, anything else that we need to take up here? The council reports? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.